Have you seen Park County's largest beehive? Come by and check us out. We are located across from the historic Ritz Theater. We offer honey, vintage, handmade and homemade items. The vintage beehive is open Wednesday through Sunday, 10 to 5. Like us on Facebook.
Okay. They've been down there three times since the 70s.
First on the journey then. Jim, do you want to introduce your cast?
Yes, sir, I would. This is Matt Stekle. And Matt Stekle is with his business, Court Facility. And we met all about a year or so ago. We talked and I talked to commissioners about it and we're interested. But of course, funding and all that comes from you guys. He's going to explain it in detail. Let me give you a brief thing we talked about. At some point, I'll be leaving and Don will be leaving. And such a learning curve for Don when he first came in as custodian with all the equipment in the courthouse. But also, we're talking about the equipment in the jail. And what Matt's company does is they'll go in and they'll do the inspections. They'll write down, keep track of all, every piece of equipment we have, what the maintenance required, all it is. Make a book list for that so we can follow that. So we'll actually have something that someone can use as a document to follow. So Matt, if you go right ahead, you want to sit up there and say, here, you get out of this.
Yeah, you do whatever you want to do.
Because Matt's definitely.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys meeting with me. I'll be brief, quick.
We like that.
Yeah.
I will be. Please just never.
I will be brief. So let me say one thing real quick. He's probably going to cover this, but you might want to listen to the part that there, I think it was Hamilton County, I think so, but county. They actually hired, they were able to hire a full-time person just on the cost they were saving by not, you know, we're reacting. Some breaks, we go get it fixed and maintained. They were able to pay without the compensation just by maintaining, preventing the breakdown. So I also covered that in his presentation.
I'll just take a photo on one of these and I'll get these when I'm done, but you guys can keep this. So yeah, appreciate your time. So I've got 20 years, my entire career in facilities management consulting, project administration. Worked for several really large global companies across pretty large and diverse portfolios. And three years ago, I went out on my own. Door opened up originally with Noble County. So the 92 counties and sheriffs in Indiana actually have a state requirement that they have to have a written and documented maintenance program for the jail. So that's kind of how this started. Sheriff Weber was a new sheriff his first term and he was dinged on his inspection for not having it. And he got in touch with me and I basically said, I've seen a lot of different versions, but I've never done one. I said, it's not going to be boilerplate. I'm not going to take it, something off the shelf. If I do it, I'm going to walk through your specific facility and the specific equipment you have. I'll throw something together, we'll see what I come up with. So I actually did Noble County and several sets of eyes from the Indiana Sheriff's Association. See, lose several of their commissioners. It kind of just spread like nothing like this exists and we want it. We want to see every county in the state in terms of the jail have this. So then it kind of spread from there. I'm now doing project management, facilities consulting for a lot of the counties in Indiana. I really appreciate stick to the 72, 74 smaller counties. I think there's a really need and niche for what I can offer to help these counties save money. In terms of maintenance, I know capital planning, you guys especially being a council. Statewide, there's just a lot of out of nowhere, we need a new chiller, we need a new roof. There's very little planning going on in terms of, from a proactive approach. So anyways, this, what you have before you is an actual copies I've done for Jade County, Vermillion County, Montgomery County, Sheriff Needham next door to you guys. Blackford County, quite, quite a few. So I took this a step further and actually take that, this, which it will be tailored. You guys have an option for the courthouse and the jail. Actually take this and then put it into a digital platform. So now your maintenance guys, your custodial, and I kind of interview them, not from a job hiring perspective, but to know their skillset. I've got enough years doing this to where I don't want to build the templates that they're going to be completing month to month. I kind of get to know their skillset. I'm not going to quit, I'm not going to build it to the point where they don't understand half of it. So, but I take this actual program and then put it into a digital monthly platform. And so now your maintenance people, custodians are actually filling this out month to month. I do a monthly and then a quarterly, the quarterly for the certain building systems. Your bigger building systems that don't need eyes on them every month. But everything inside and out of the building, you guys know and the commissioners do as well, that there is some accountability. We have your assets, I've told Commissioner Meese, what, a lot of the commissioners, although they realize it, it kind of hits them when you place it this way, that you don't have an option in terms of maintenance. You own the assets that are yours, you have to maintain them no matter what. So what I do is basically try to get some efficiency out of it, some continuity, what are we doing and why? And then obviously, everyone knows this stuff's being maintained, not just said. I've, I've seen some horror stories and train wrecks throughout the state where this was supposed to be being done. This was supposed to be being done. And I actually co-put this program together. So I myself come and do this. It's about four hours on site per building and then the rest is documented at the house. But I'll go up, like for instance, I get on the roof and there's holes in the building. I get out, you know, I'll get into the mechanical equipment and there's four inches of dust on the filter. So, you know, it really is a good program to let you guys know who has to maintain these buildings. And the infrastructure alone is pretty costly, especially in a jail. You have a lot of building systems or advanced building systems that that jail's a 24/7, 365 facility. So pretty much the agreement quote that I talked to the commissioners, I met with Commissioner Meese and then I met with the entire board of commissioners and they saw a lot of value in it and pretty much said, would I be willing to come to you guys from a financial perspective? But the quote and agreement you have before you is actually for a maintenance program for the courthouse and the jail, including a three-year agreement for the inspections. So it's, it's too much, the maintenance program's not a big deal, but for me to build these templates digitally from scratch, again, none of this is like off the shelf. This is all customized to your specific courthouse and building. It's just too much work to do it for one year. I've been asked, why don't you do it for a year? Now, you're paying for, the commissioners would pay for it upfront. It's, I set it up and then it's good for three years. There's no additional fees or costs. And then included in that, I actually get, I will get back to the commissioners, which I can give you guys as well, a full document. I'm not putting together a full, robust capital plan, but I'm on, I'm in your buildings anyways from top to bottom. So while I'm there, I put together a spreadsheet for you guys of, hey, while I'm here, I don't know if it's on your radar, you got about four years on your roof, you got about two years left on this specific refrigerate. You guys are going to get a high-level roll-up, at least to get you guys thinking of, you're at the end of your life cycle on these pieces of equipment. You know, start thinking about it. And obviously, as a council and control of county finances, the more proactive and ahead of that game you guys are, the better. And to be honest with you, like this here, this is like one piece. This isn't even my specialty. So I specialize in more than anything, project management. I just saved Martin County $30,000 about a month ago on a fire enunciator upgrade. So if you guys are doing replacements, basically what I'm finding throughout the state is that no one has the time or the subject matter expertise to manage these projects in terms of scope of work and putting it together and then managing and then making sure it's actually done right. And a lot of contractors in the state know this. So they're coming to these county governments. I'm not going to badmouth contractors, but they know, they know the game. No one knows what's going on here. It's up on the roof, no one's got eyes on it. Are they over-engineering it? Are they giving you something you don't need? So Martin County got a few quotes for $65,000 and I came in literally and ran with it and got it for 30 with a couple pieces of additional equipment. So when I'm dealing with contractors versus someone else that they're, they know it's legit, that they're not going to, they're not going to play games. So anyways, if you guys do need upgrades, there's a lot of value in project services. Sorry, that was probably long-winded, but. Do you guys have any questions, you know, feedback?
Sheriff, what do you, Sheriff, what do you think?
Our maintenance guy right now is pretty good. Now, who knows, you know, how long he'll be around, but we have found stuff that's been missed over the years, but. And I haven't seen any of this and I don't remember what the cost is either, but.
So it's not, you actually bring up a good point. It's not from the standpoint alone of if actually the better your maintenance technician is, the better, especially at jails. So a lot of jails in the, in the state don't have any maintenance guy. They're 100% outsourced, absolute train wreck going that route. Nothing's controllable from fiscal or accountability standpoint. So actually, you having a really good maintenance guy is, you're already way ahead of the curve. It's not just about the accountability part, like he's not doing his job. It's the fact that the commissioners and you guys are funding the maintenance and the upgrades to these buildings. You got eyes on it, you know that the maintenance is being done, that your investment, both from the commissioners and a council perspective, you throw money at a piece of equipment, this is going to make sure you get 30 years out of it instead of six or seven years out of it. So yeah, maybe I worded that wrong, but you know, if you got a really bad maintenance guy, there's, that's one portion of it. But yeah, I should have mentioned that. I got a whole list of references from Sheriff Reynolds up in Porter County, a couple of really big commissioners. I got, you know, a whole list of people that can vouch for my services and what I do.
So Jim, I guess the commissioner's goal, or maybe you can kind of, you kind of touched on it, is to just try to get, especially the courthouse, try to get. Because that is a fairly complicated, I guess, the heating and cooling and that sort of thing is a fairly complicated system.
It is, and it's about 20 years old. I think it was put in the year I became commissioner, so I think it'd be pushing 20 years anyway. And we've gone through two custodians now and I know when Don came and Dick left, he just walked away. As you know, we just pretty much run things until breaks and then have Irish mechanic will come in and fix it and probably that. That one time probably would have paid for this, for this maintenance plan.
So, and a major malfunction of that will cost a fortune because it's all upstairs.
And you may lose productivity time in the courthouse, all those kinds of things.
So it's just have a huge mess to.
And honestly, the single best thing you guys can do as a county, literally, whenever you have a contractor on site, I don't care if it's to plunge a toilet or to fix the chiller, any and every time, any contractor's around site, there's a mandatory requirement that your custodian, your jail maintenance guy, they shadow. I, I, it's, it sounds simple, but I mean, what you can do simply by shadow, I don't care what you're doing, go follow them, ask questions, what's he doing, why? Because that problem comes up next time, you're not going to get a $5,000 invoice if that guy shadowed him. Actually, like, let me take a look at it. I mean, you can bring a maintenance tech from here to here by literally following contractors around, which you guys have on site anyways, so.
So in the end, will we get a product that basically is, for lack of a better way of saying this, in a very simplistic way, is a guidebook on how to maintain the facility?
You're getting the maintenance program in terms of your specific equipment and then how to maintain it specifically. How often, what to do. So a custodial in this instance, he's probably not going to, he wouldn't even know some, simple things such as a condensate drain. I mean, some, there's a lot. I'll build it, I'll build the program standard from advanced to elementary in terms of subject matter expertise of your custodial or tech. The make the digital platform is where I'll actually, he's the one that's going to be filming it up, either a tablet or his phone. He can put notes in right there on the spot, he can take pictures. I mean, it's, it's, it's live, it's, it's really robust and it's up to the end user, how much effort he puts into that.
So this is to ensure continuity of operations without a learning curve in the event that somebody moves on, Don retires, and next guy comes in, it gives them something to work with in terms of, okay, I, I can look at this, understand what's in front of me and not take six months learning how, or learning what my problem is.
So six months actually is the average for a single facility. Technical facilities such as a jail. Earlier in my career, I was actually out of the blue, hired with the role with a global company when I was still crap. I actually was a building engineer and was thrown in with two high rises overnight and with no one to even open a door, let alone what's here. So yes, this literally is going to bring someone up to speed immediately. Where is it at? What does this air handler service? What does this pump control?
Everyone, I think that's a big part of the commissioner, that ongoing thing as we change, we get turnovers.
Absolutely.
There are things right now, I'm sure that Don could be doing that we just don't hope he can be done. It would be great to let you know, we better run until breaks and then fix it. We've had multiple bills from Irish and that's five, six thousand dollar range for comparing something that couldn't have been prevented. Had to, had to make service. But no, that's what needs to be done. None of us were around, it was put in by Simmons, I think 2003 or '04, I think was before I was gone.
Honestly, it's just about being proactive. If you could maintain equipment and get extra three, four, five years, I mean, you drop 15 grand now or you drop 15 grand four years from now. I mean, this, this pays for itself, no doubt about it.
What do you think, Bob? Have you ever dealt with any of these or seen these?
Yes, in a variety of different settings and I don't disagree with any of them, to be honest. Your, your jail is your single biggest liability point for a variety of reasons. It's also the, one of the most complicated. And it used to be, 100 years ago, it was a pretty simple operation, but now it's, you've got a lot of different systems there. I mean, no matter how good your in-house maintenance guy is, they need some assistance. They need a guidebook and like cameras that it's going to be continuity for, I mean, somebody comes in, you don't know how long they're going to stay.
And speaking of, actually you mentioned liability. So this program actually was used in a potential lawsuit by an inmate. So the inmates, obviously some of them would like to sue at any chance they get. One inmate, not COVID or Roma-related, he claimed he got really sick and almost died with the flu and there was no heating and cooling and literally got to the point where there were lawyers involved. And that was thrown, that program actually was put on the table. This is literally what we do and it, it closed that door immediately. So there are liability protections. As a county, you guys are taking care of the assets and there is some, some documentation of you guys are on top of these buildings and you know what's in them and that they are being maintained. Well, y'all, I think it's a good idea. I mean, I don't, I think we need to do it, make sure it's obviously our main board with it, so.
We're on board with anything you'd have money for.
Oh, I wondered about that, yeah. You're in the case.
Sounds.
Sounds very familiar. Yeah, sounds very familiar. So we might just, somebody would like to make a motion that, that we will fund, I might say what the amount is. So the $21,600, and you say that's to be paid upfront and you said it's.
That's both buildings and that's three years.
And that's a three-year contract or?
Three year.
I, I pay for the digital subscription upfront. I build what you guys, what your guys are going to fill out for the next three years, I build upfront, which is why I ask for it upfront. Because literally, I mean, the major infrastructure, that going forward three years is just them filling it out monthly, submitting. I actually go through it myself and take notes and take, I'll actually create a roll-up form that I'll send to the commissioners in addition to those inspections. So I manage it from an email. There's behind the scenes for the next three years. I have eyes on these reports as well. Comfortable with that, Bob? So if you want to entertain, somebody will make a motion that we will fund, we will fund the project. We don't obviously choose.
I'll make that motion.
Most of the invite exactly in all favor. Okay, there you are. You see the commissioners, we'll get, we'll get it paid for.
And then I'll, when I get them that high level, I'm not going to get in super details on that capital plan, but it'll be more than enough to give you guys as a council, hey, you know, yeah, I went through these buildings and this is what he's saying, we should probably start thinking about just you guys. Train wreck, you know, with out of nowhere, that $300,000 roof. Thank you. If I could just take the programs back, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
So we'll just do a train, we'll do a couple of transfers then to.
We'll move, what I propose to move, do is move 15,000 out of the commissaried utilities to a new line, service contracts, 50-80 in that, in that department. And the balance, 6,600 from liability insurance to that new line.
Thanks.
You're not leaving though, are you?
No. Is this bad? Surely.
Well, we've gotten, you've gotten something from us, so it's going to be.
Thanks you too.
Thanks.
So Darrell's here to talk about the, we're here for the wastewater again. So you want to update us, make some changes to the bylaws and anything you want to say and then we'll see where we're at.
The bylaws are basically, like we said, right now, they're like flexible until we get, you know, more insight on stuff and then they'll be approved. If there is a district developed, they will approve them. And we agree, we changed the Little Raccoon Conservancy to the Soil and Water District, Conservation District. The reason is that they're going to be a non-voting member with that place. That way they will have this kind of help with kind of overlooking education, this and that. As the district grows, we see that, you know, being like if Bridgen decided to go on to, you know, decide for their own face to create something like that, I mean, that would be in Little Raccoon. We are talking about discharging stuff into, you know, streams. So it would be important that they were available, so we know things are there. Also, we ended up, we went back to two commissioners, one council and then two from Marshall. Those people will end up and have the voting rights. We agree that the terms should be staggered and we'll, you know, that, like I said, that was just kind of a draft and those would be looked at because yes, that's totally fair. They do need to be staggered. That way there's somebody there that's, when somebody leaves, there's somebody else there that kind of knows what's going on. You can't have everybody.
What she's saying is, is the draft had, the two Marshall appointments were, the initial terms were four years. The council appointment was three and the commissioners was two. Or sorry, the commissioners and the council were two and the soil and water was the three year. And I proposed back to her that you should separate those out so the town isn't making both their appointments at the same time. Commissioners now with two would not make theirs at the same time as council, et cetera. So that there was a better continuity from the board's appointing positions to us.
No, that's fine. There was some terms, you know, just some, just questioning, you know, like Turkey Run's wastewater, you know, it's there. Their sewer system, a way to tap into that, that's not a possibility. I mean, that system is over 25, is, was built like in 1968. So when you look at original plan, when they originally started talking about developing sewer region back with the Bloomingdale, Marshall, Turkey Run and then the school system all together, that's going to go like 25 years. So a lot of things have kind of changed. So we look at them as being more of a partnership. With them being a customer, they're going to be able to help pay down the debt because they will be consuming a lot of the usage. So their bill is going to be the one that's going to help. Because Marshall alone will not be able to support the project. When you look at how many we would have. Currently, I think we ended up, it's kind of roughly, it was projected 182 possible people, like in the town.
Is that households or is that household?
Households. Roughly, those, that's just kind of in that little area. Those would end up in two, some of them, like we said, that they're not 300 feet. It kind of depends on what the by, what the, what the district kind of decides. But if they're not 300, three feet, or if they end up have put in a new subject, they could end up and opt out if they meet those criteria. So that could end up being a little less. So basically, we know as a town, we have problems. We're more than welcome if you guys wanted to come and look at our problem areas because we're already contaminating the streams thoroughly. So if IDM came in and really looked at us, we'd be in big trouble. So we're just trying to do what we can to survive and knowing that we are contaminating our area, I mean, that's, that's not fair to our citizens, to our town.
So I've spoken in various ones, I've spoken to different ones in Marshall, out around. So naturally, cost is of course at the top and what you've told us so far, 65-85, you think maybe a sewer bill.
Right.
I spoke to the town of Rockville, they have a minimum and it's around 50 or 60 dollars just a year, just to have access, whether you use the thing or not. I'm not. So, you know, and people need, that's one, of course, is the cost, just one thing. You're right, I don't think it's sustainable with just the town of Marshall. I don't think you'll ever pay off an 18 or 16 million dollar debt. You won't.
No, no.
It's not. And the other thing I also dug in, you have a lot of delinquency even on your water bills now.
And we are.
Well, I'm sure you are, but you know, people can't pay, they can't pay. It's not, I'm not saying it's their fault, it's just, they just can't pay. So now we're going to add, and if you think it's 85 dollars, it'll be 100.
Well.
It will be quickly, but then.
Yeah, if it's not, well, it will.
And those numbers are still kind of flexible because we ended up and we, I mean, there's other steps we got to go through.
Oh, yeah.
Totally. I mean, this, this isn't just saying if you guys agree to it, that, you know, it's a done deal because there's a lot. But if we go as a regional, we're going to end up and qualify for grant money. That grant money will end up and maybe help buy down some of those residence fees is what we're hoping.
Because they'll have to disable their septic tank, is that correct? When they, and that means.
And that would be, that would be the grant, that is going to be part of it.
So you're going to go on and do that for the.
And pay for the courthouse and stuff like that. That's what we're trying to propose.
And all that, through the, through the yard and fix the yard and all of the things that, the little things that add up.
Right. I mean, we're trying to make it as affordable as we can. That's why we need to have it as a district. As a district, we are more available for funding and without the funding, there's no way.
So the other comments, some of the other comments that were made to me and to me, there's a viable working treatment plant in the Turkey Run State Park. Many of your residents, almost universally, any of them said anything to me, why can't we take our sewage, pump it to the Turkey Run School Campus, because that's where, and then use that treatment plant? Why can't the district lease that plant, run the plant, which is part of what DNR, if you believe them, says that they don't want to be bothered with running a plant and go that way? It would be so much cheaper to.
If it was done, if it was done 25 years, over 25 years ago, it would have been. But the problem is, that plant is now already, they're putting money in to try to put Band-Aids on the system. So they're looking at having, end up eventually, they're going to have to have a new plant.
Well, of course, the, the district then could, could pay for those things and help fix that plant. If it's truly not in that bad a shape, I'm not sure that it is. They admitted in the meeting to me that they have 300,000 gallon excess capacity. So I'm not sure it's in bad a shape is what you may be led to believe. I know they don't want the plant. They don't want it next to their campground. That's why they don't want it. That's it. They don't want next to their camp.
And that's why we end up in, you know, as us as a town, we have no control over.
Well, I know, but I'm saying that I think that you should aggressively pursue that, you know, that plant. I think it's a travesty for the state of Indiana and DNR to take a basically a working plan and just say, well, we're going to abandon it because we don't want it anywhere. And that's a tragedy, that's a, that's a travesty, bad public policy. It is not a good thing. I can't justify that to any taxpayer that says, and even though we don't control it, and I fully agree, we don't control it, I don't control it.
Yeah.
But it's awfully hard to justify that and then we turn around and say, well, we're going to build a plant. It's been 16 million dollars to do. So that's kind of where I'm at. I mean, and that's the feedback I've gotten because I've asked. And I've also, of course, gotten feedback from those that are downstream, that are concerned about you dumping into Leatherwood Creek that's dry two or three months a year. They've got wells next to that creek, so you can imagine, I won't go roll that, I'm sure you've probably heard that.
But we're already, if you think about, we're already dumping raw sewage into that creek. And that's something to think about. I mean, this way it is treated, so.
And everybody agreed that I spoke to or had any contact with it, they all agree there's a problem. Nobody suggested that there wasn't. It's just how that we get to try to fix it. That, that was a lot, but there was no disagreement that you have a problem. And there's none for me that you have a problem. I realize that, I mean, I say the black water, when we have heavy rains, there's no disagreement.
And we look at it too. I mean, I know what the, I mean, I know, I understand. You know, they want to get rid of their plant, okay, but for the town, that's not, they're not going to let us in on it. They want to get rid of it. They don't want to have to keep putting money into it. I'm hoping that they end up, and with them on board with helping, we can end up and maybe get. I'm hoping that they end up, and with them on board with helping, we can end up and maybe get more funding with being a state park, they have a little more leverage than, I mean, as a county, I mean, I look at it as that.
Yeah, I'm not sure they'll be as much help as one, that, that could be. I've never known them really to be that much help, so...
I believe in Spencer, and you can, Cindy, you can crack me, and Spencer, aren't they helping down there with their...
Actually, the state revolving fund is what put in the extra money, but it's a part of the DNR partnership that the state then was willing to put in additional money.
Well, they're only, you know, I voiced my opinion, I'm getting ready to read something that I prepared on the DNR and their willingness to participate in a lot of things, but, you know, if there's something in it for them, they will, if it's not absolutely beneficial to them, they won't. But what I have to say about the subject, over the last several months, since the idea of the regional sewer district was discussed in redevelopment commission meeting, we've thought long and hard about this. And this group, I think, has spent as much time on anything, on this subject, as they have anything in the last several years. And I thought, we've all thought long and hard about this. This is accelerated over the last few weeks with the request to approve the petition to form a district. Through this time, I've listened to the information presented, talked to several constituents, and done a lot of research on my own. Marshall's in my district, my constituents live there, I'm born and raised near there. I went to Bean Day, I played baseball in town, my kids played at the park and play baseball there. A very important place to me, I want nothing more than to do something good for the town, its residents. For that, I'm very supportive of the town board's efforts to remedy a problem they see as evident, and I agree that it is evident. The cost of the system is high, the town's residents can and may have difficulty bearing another monthly cost that could be up to a hundred dollars. It's a difficult proposition, some residents may severely struggle with. This cost is an unknown at this point and some time away, but nonetheless, the possible new monthly cost will be borne by the residents. Further, when I was trustee of Washington Township, I met with the fire department annually. They, as well as many constituents, would constantly ask me why Turkey Run State Park couldn't contribute to the services they use, including fire, first responders, EMS, law enforcement, highway. Marshall Volunteer Fire Department makes over a hundred runs per year to Turkey Run State Park, many to carry people out of backwoods. The local management of the park is supportive of our local services and have requested funds to be allocated to support them, however, the powers that be in Indianapolis do not want to support this. The governor is not interested, the legislators are not interested, the management of the DNR is not interested. The people of this county supplement the existence of this park by their tax dollars, as all the land the DNR owns, controls, is exempt from taxation. The DNR continues to buy acres, particularly along Sugar Creek and the Wall Bash River, year after year, outbidding other prospective buyers, lowering their tax base, and shifting more and more tax burden to the local taxpayers. I realize and understand the park does employ some local residents, but I believe it's still a net drain on the local services without adequate contribution. The DNR wanting to decommission a perfectly good sewage treatment plant just because it's on state park property does nothing for me. The system has sufficient capacity, by their own admission, to handle Marshall and Bloomingdale if they ever choose to join. We cannot willingly support another bailout for the DNR on the backs of local taxpayers just because they don't want the plant behind a campground. I can say with absolute certainty that neighbors' proposed treatment plant location do not want it either, and they are taxpayers and my constituents. It would go a long way for the DNR to reconsider the position, for the location of the plant is a sign of support for the community that carries them through taxpayer-funded services. Speaking of the proposed location for the new plant, Leatherwood Creek has at best a trickle of flow during the summer months. Be very little flow ahead of the plant used to dilution water from the outflow of the plant. Downstream, some residents have water wells close to the creek, depending upon those wells for drinking water for houses and livestock. What happens to the water supply when the majority of the water flowing down the creek after installation is treated sewage water? Is it safe? Will the well be contaminated? Will it be so highly treated with chemicals? See, this is a significant issue for nearby residents to the proposed plant. Sure, no one wants it in their backyard, we're all willing to shift the plant, but are we willing to shift the plant nestled way back in the behind campground at Turkey Run, outflowing into Sugar Creek, to south of Marshall, next to and upstream of several taxpayers, with little other options? What's really wrong with where it is now? In reality, who even knew there was a plant behind the campground before this started? I sure didn't. So after thorough review of the facts, conversation with several constituents, colleagues, I will vote no on a resolution presented, allowing the petition to be presented to form a county-wide sewer district. Should the proposed plan change, I would be willing to reconsider, but until then, I cannot support the plan. I realize this may kill it, I realize this may harm Marshall, and it may, and the work they've done to try to make a positive improvement. I realize that I may be in the minority. However, it is my opinion, if we go ahead on ahead with this, that we do significant harm to the residents by Marshall by footing a large share of the bill to allow the DNR to take out a modern functioning plant. Someone's gonna have to pay the bill for this system, and the way I see it, the residents and businesses in Marshall will. There's a better way that should be explored, by using existing plants feeding it.
I, I look at it as the town ended up and has an opportunity to grow, which would mean that they would end up possibly being more residents if we have sewer system. Current lots are not capable of anybody adding any new housing, so without having a sewer, the town will not be able to grow. As houses are deteriorating and getting torn down and lots, the lot signs will not be able to accommodate unless they can end up and buy more, have more lots. We do have businesses in our town, which would help supplement them to maybe end up and increase their workforce, get future X there. So I see it as, like I said, we're not looking at also looking outside of the box at what the potential is for the town. I understand the state park, I totally understand that, but I don't know how to get our government at the state level to realize what's happening in the rural counties. I mean, it's kind of obvious, look at how the school systems are kind of going. They're doing away with this voucher system, it's cutting our funding for our school systems drastically. We all know that, we don't have enough kids here to support it, so if we don't try to make some kind of a growth, how do we survive?
I'm not arguing that point, as I stated in that, I realize, first of all, that the town has a problem, and that you guys are trying to solve it, and I support that. I also agree with everything that you said about the state and its viewpoint on rural counties, which is a lot of what I basically had to say there, right? I think that there needs to be, I, I, my position is, is that I'm not willing to allow that park to leach off the citizens of us, part of this, this part of the county, anymore, when they have perfectly fine operating asset. Yeah, it may take some money, I don't argue that, I think we all pretty well probably do that. If they don't want to run it, fine, the district can run it. But shove that thing down there on Leatherwood Creek, upstream and next to our taxpayers, is not a good idea either. And the only thing, the only voice that I have in this, at this point, is whether or not I vote for or against moving this thing forward, and with the offer, the information that I have to work with, obviously, at this point, know how I feel about that. I'm not trying to kill Marshall Sewage Plant, or their, their plant for sewer, I'm absolutely not trying to kill that, because I absolutely agree with you that it needs to happen. I do not disagree.
With sewer plants, they say the water is a lot cleaner, and it has to be cleaner than what that creek is currently doing, let alone all the livestock and stuff that's already along the creek. How safe is the water overall now? I mean, if you really checked it, it would probably be cleaner with having a cleaner flow from a septic system going, because that, that's just a great matter, it's cleaner water, than what's there.
It may be.
We agree with that, it's just, why dump it this way when biggest part of it is gonna be coming from the school and the park, that's gonna be the biggest body, and the plant right there, we just need to pump it that way. The DNR took up the ground all in that sewer creek, then give this back to the Conservancy, and then if you gotta build a plant, you gotta build it somewhere.
Especially when we're already pumping it into a waterway that is flowing adequately all the time versus, like John said, a creek that is dry two to three months out of the year, that's...
We, we all agree it needs to be done, and all the little towns are in the same boat. But the, the DNR, it just needs to go back on them, they give this thing up, if they don't want it, give it up, and let us use it, and go that way. That just makes more sense than, you got more water to take care of it. People in that sewer creek and canoe, they don't know there's a sewer plant there, nobody does, you know? So that one's out there where it works good, you got plenty of water to work with, I think that's what we need to work on. We all agree it needs to be done.
I mean, I, I think that if you, if you could, you know, take this from what we've said, basically, I think, I think the handwriting's on the whole, on here. Go back, try your best, really pursue DNR, you're gonna have to pursue them, I mean, it's not gonna be just send them a letter and say, I mean, Cindy's good at that, and, and contact some of the state officials, I don't know how to, I don't have any magic way to do it, and try to get them to understand what needs to be done, and, and use that plant.
Turn around, you'll bail them out, you'll take their plan.
You'll take it away, the district can put money in and upgrade it, I'm fine with the district putting money in to upgrade that plant if it needs upgrading, and I'll support, I'll support you on that with no problem. But I cannot justify to these people, when you say we're gonna build another plant when we have one right up their road, I mean, they just, none of them like that, and I mean, it's just, and they recognize you have a problem.
My conversation with the residents of the town, where, you know, I don't know how much of a problem we got, but I don't, don't know that we don't either. I mean, it's kind of a, well, you know, I, I get it, I understand, but when it comes to the, the rest of this, it's a universal, even in that, even the people I talk to in town, an absolutely universal hell no. I can't support that, there, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't.
I think you really need to get Morrison and Boots on board with that too, they need to understand, there's a perfectly good facility sitting there, the DNR does not listen to us, when they listen to us, they will listen to the legislature, so you need to get those guys involved. So if you could at least make an attempt to try that, I think that that's, I think that's what I'm hearing, is that what I'm hearing, guys, or I don't want to speak for anybody, that's...
Need to make them come to the table.
Try to get them to the table and do something. I applaud you for everything you've done, so I please, I hope we don't take this as, because we have really tried to do our due diligence, I mean, I've called people, I, anybody I see in Marshall, I ask them, I talked to some of the business, I mentioned the businesses, I've spoken to the beat, the Elmermans, we've, I've done that to try to get what they're, and nobody is like, oh, yeah, let's, let's do it, let's go, they're either neutral, or they're negging even, most of the first thing out there is, what about that plant up there?
And as we know, people don't look for problems.
Well, we're not, we're not a side guy, we're not a side guy.
We're not having a problem, what are you talking about?
That's why, that's why they're neutral, but they're also not sitting there saying, no, we don't need a sewer project in this town. I, I really, maybe one person said, I don't need that, well, okay, you don't, but the other ones were all like, you know, I, I understand it, I get it, I get it.
I mean, as we, as we are working on the tiles that are failing, places like that, and those areas, we're seeing where everything's kind of going.
Oh, it is, yeah.
We know where it's going.
And they have been, some of them have been to me, I said, where's your sewer drain? And they said, oh, out that field in the, in the field, oh, yeah.
So, you know, when you're talking about Leatherwood, you know, and the water, and I'm like, but, it's probably gonna be cleaner when, if we did build a sewer plant there, because there would be a flow, it would help end up and try to get what's there flushed out, so I don't...
So, okay, so we'll go to Bob, is there, you, you've heard all of this now, and, and from, from what we need to do here, and, and any other comments you have, I mean, I think we kind of discussed it long enough, so...
Yeah, certainly.
We did have, have Bob prepare the resolution, it is here, this was not decided in advance by any means. I have it here, it's still, it's handed out to everyone, so, we actually had him write our own, I don't like using cameras and all things, but we do have it here, and it is available.
It's substantially the same thing, I've fluffed up a few things, but, me, me, as to make, the resolution's prepared, I'll just read it briefly, sorry. So a resolution relating to the submission of regional, of a regional wastewater district petition to the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. Just briefly, it goes through the preparatory language, and then it says now therefore be resolved by the Park County Council, that the council hereby authorizes the creation and submission of a petition to the commissioner by them requesting an order establishing the Park County Regional Wastewater District as provided for under IC thirteen dash twenty-six as amended. It sounds as though nobody is willing to make a motion.
Is that the actual one, gonna make a motion to adopt? So there'd be, there's, there's gonna be no motion, apparently. I can't make motions, so I'm off the, so... So, I mean, so can they just take it from here, and maybe we've asked them to go back if, if they desire, obviously, to try to pursue DNR and the state about that plan?
Absolutely, this, this only relates to the submission of the petition for the creation of the district, that doesn't, I mean, handicap you, in fact, it sounds like they're strongly encouraging you and your group to get IDM's involvement in, in creating what I think is universally agreed to be a problem. Everybody knows there's a problem in Marshall, and maybe some other areas, but certainly in Marshall. But the, the, it sounds like they, we need some more input and lie-in from IDM, rather than just, we want to watch the lights and walk away.
And we're glad, I think, you know, we're glad to support you in that, if, I mean, if there's something we can do, if you get with them and get really a seat at the table of DNR, or the state, I think, I'm sure the commissioners and us, there's something we can do to help with that, we're ready to do that, we will help you with that.
Absolutely.
Is there a way too, though, if, I mean, I think if the, if the county's sanitation department, I mean, is there anything where they go out and check stuff periodically, just to kind of, I mean, they don't do a little problem?
They don't check unless there's a problem, as far as I, as far as I know, Jim would probably be better answered than that than me.
No, same thing as most everything else, if there's a problem, they check, or if there's a request to be checked, they would check, but they just don't go out and do, when, respect for the stuff, so I guess, we got one person department, so I'm not gonna have one person doing that. Another venue might, and avenue to pursue, the state at one time, as you know, we talked about that, and I've cried about it for twenty years, at one time I was willing to build a, build a new facility, and give it to the county, Marshall and Bloomingdale could agree, take all that on, and if they, but Bloomingdale was not willing to agree, I mean, they were willing once to build a new plant, if they wanted to get out of the, out of business at the state park, then have them build that plant they talked about building twenty years ago, and then everybody would be happy. They get out of the business at the state park, and they build a new plant that we don't have to pay for, and then we're back to operational fees after that, so that's, that's an option too.
But then we're back too, as, where are you gonna place it? Because the DNR owns, like you said, Sugar Creek, so they're not gonna let you place it. So as the engineers predicted, the best spot for this was Leatherwood, so you're gonna be back to the battle of the Leatherwood again.
Yeah.
Or though, that's not gonna work.
And nobody's gonna want it in your backyard, so though, if they're willing to build it, then finding a place for it is an option, is an obligation that we'd have to find to do that, so where are you, where are you gonna do that? The best option, no doubt, is, I think, exactly what they're saying, keep what they got and put it in Sugar Creek, whether they like it in Sugar Creek or not, putting it in Sugar Creek is sure better than putting it in Leatherwood. That's really...
Yeah, we didn't do a lot of water.
But I think if they were to come back and say, oh, well, we'll build you, build a plant, to me, you know, then we'll just have to cross that bridge and get there, I mean, we'll figure it, we'll figure it out, we'll figure it out.
And we know that at some point, we all know at some point, state's gonna come in and say that you shall build it, and that's just how it's gonna be, or, or, or whatever we have to do, of course, you do that, so... We can't cry forever about a missed opportunity, but if they were willing to do that once, they should be willing to do that again, so maybe we can reach in the middle someplace, you build it, we'll take it over, we'll operate it, and then we'll go from there. We're not asking for anything you didn't offer before, this is, this was your...
And I might point out, you know, the, the DNR leases property all the time, to concession holders, to riding ponies, to camp stores, I mean, this is, it's not a new concept that they would lease that facility.
Now, they're talking, they have three hundred thousand excess capacity, I don't know what the requirements would be of adding Marshall and the school, and...
Well, the schools are already on, so...
Schools are already there.
That's right, that's right, yeah. So we're not talking...
I can't imagine having three hundred thousand more from Bloomingdale and Marshall, but I don't know.
I can't either, but... Okay, well, if they pursue that, and we'll see what happens, so thank you, so...
If nothing new they offered before, they should offer again.
We're, we're gonna need to move on, it's getting too long, so, okay, so thank you very much, so Department head comments, please?
Nope.
Okay.
You got some for me, though, it sounded like.
Yeah. Handbook, we, and we've been wanting you to try to get an update about comp time, to actually have some kind of rules for that?
Yep, Nick's working on it.
Are we working on that? But when, when was the completion date of that?
I can ask Nick Monday to find out where we are with that, but it's, it's...
Well, we need to get going on that, that's...
The question of what comes up about comp time versus vacation time, when you take first, when you take last, the only thing I remember where it was required, this is just my memory, was that the only time that we made a, this... um, was that the only time that we made a, this thing between the two was on the COVID misses. If you're doing this time because you don't wanna come to work because of a COVID concern, then you had to take your comp time first and then your vacation time, and it will be after that. As far as, I'm leaving the job, I'm gonna resign, how, what time am I gonna use the...
Well, that's the thing, it's difficult for the auditor's office and everybody. invariably we get the question, well, I'm quitting my job, you know, then I get paid for my comp time, and then I wanna take my vacation, and it puts the auditor in a bad situation when she's back to make judgments. It needs to be written down, so I know what, I don't know that I care what the policy is, I just want to have one.
That's why it's the hat one, Nick's been working on that. I agree. We just need to have some, some...
We need to lean on him, we need to lean on him. We need to get that now.
Okay, I'll ask Nick Monday about that.
What's the timeline on opening up the courthouse, the doors?
Well, we had, we wanted to open all, all back up. I don't think it was in the plan, and I think everybody's pretty happy. We're just coming through.
Well, I'm being asked by the public a lot why that we have to have, the doors are all locked up up there when, uh, you know, basically every other business is open and the COVID is...
Basically, basically every other business has one door they go in now. And we have one door you go in, so...
When you say everybody's pretty happy with that, you mean the people who work there or the public?
Yeah, the public, yeah.
No, no, people work there, and I've, I've had no complaints from the public about that.
Well, the public's asking me when the doors are gonna be open.
Okay.
They feel like that it should be open.
I can say the door is open and doors are not, so, I, we can pursue that and see. I would suspect probably not until the, the state has declared that the COVID crisis is over, everybody's got their shop, we got their management. I would say probably midsummer is what they're looking at. I think they expect by end of July that they lift all restrictions. I would say when the state lifts all restrictions, that we'll lift all restrictions as well.
There are several courthouse that have been increasing their openness here lately, so...
Or it's open, you can come in, it's not appointment only. I mean, you can come in and, and put the door. But appointments are recommended, but I think the way it was left the last time, anybody can come into the business, you just need to come through that door. Or not, should I do it in the thermometer anymore because that's shown to be ineffective, so. I think if their complaint is the lack of accessibility to anything in the courthouse, I don't think that's well founded. I think that's near, if they have to walk around to the west door instead of going in on the east door, and they have to walk around, and, and that's, yeah, they do have to do that, so.
Well, if they think that the public's gonna wind out over, you know, anything else, I mean, I feel like that they're paying for that building and it'll be open.
Well, it is open.
Well, more than one door.
Okay, and we, and we'll get there, I suspect, once the, once the state, as we released everything, once they open up all the government buildings, I would say that's probably what will follow as well. Because they're all right now, I mean, they're, there are a few, and they shoot typically the few that are the loudest, who are complaining the most, but I've had no one, I've had no one complaining to me about those doors not being accessible, other than the workers who have to walk from the east side all around to the west side. We have a few who use that east side door, and they know they're not supposed to use the east side door, use the east side door, but they're too lazy to walk all, walk all the way around the other side.
Well, any complaints I've had have not been from courthouse people, they've just been from the general public that wanna know why the courthouse is not open. But all doors.
Yeah, all doors, yeah.
All doors. Okay, uh, health department. We are told that there's only half, like, three members showing up to the health board meetings, and that there's, there's quite a few problems down there. What's the, what's the situation with that?
I don't think we need to get involved with the health.
Well, you appoint those people, so you're...
That's state regulated thing, so I don't know how we, if we have...
Well, the members aren't showing up. Can't you do something about that?
Well, I think the health board should report that to us, and we would make new appointees. So I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. Health board wants to tell us they have people not showing, or appointees aren't showing, I'm not going to the meetings and checking to see if people are showing up.
Oh, I know, but...
So if they wanna report to us that they're having people aren't showing up, we'll replace them. And hard to be, that won't be a problem. Need to have Bob.
So, yeah, I was gonna say, some of these boards have a statutory requirement.
Yeah, is that just by a cause, not come to meetings?
Yes, maybe if they miss three in a row, I think is what the statute says, they can...
Three in a row?
They can be, they're going.
That's my recollection.
Okay, I think it's three in a row, they can be around there.
So, we're, we're all four there, we're like anybody, we don't have to report, but it's just tough to get people to point your boards and do the job. Got a lot of people wanna be on that board, but they don't wanna be bothered, so that's where we're at.
Well, it's kinda... So you have anything else in the, no?
Well, I wouldn't worry at all.
We're not having, well, you haven't done anything yet, so we're...
We're gonna consider a conference here in a little bit, that I'm gonna respectfully ask that we make sure Hannah type check gets dealt with near next meeting, so. We'll make sure she has information.
Over the, yeah.
For the health department.
Okay, okay.
A way overdue bill?
A way overdue bill.
Okay.
No.
If you're, if you ever have any complaints about that, 'cause I've never had a complaint about the health board, so if that is a big problem, health board, probably there's a health board, needs to contact...
Today, we're gonna nail us under that, but there are problems down there, I think, might be needing to make looking into it.
Okay, we just need new work, though, and that'd be the board president. I don't even know who the president is. Is, is the health officer, Dr. Swain, is there a president of the health board?
Mary Curtis, so.
Mary Curtis, okay. Well, if there's a problem, she needs to come report that. That's, that's their job, as president of those boards, to come report to the commissioners that we're having difficulty on our board, it's not functioning because of these reasons. We can, we can fix the reason, go to the military.
Okay.
But I'm not gonna make random appearances at board...
Well, I don't know, nobody has, I don't expect you to do that, so. Justin?
Uh, real brief, seventy-one inmates today, uh, nine are DOC. Um, we collected three thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents so far for our fees. Uh, we're averaging per month eleven thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars for DOC. But I believe what I'd seen, they're gonna pay us this year what the DOC had paid last year. So, that's a little lower than what we were last year, but it should stay the same on what they're gonna give us back. Uh, so far, we're thirty-five thousand eight eight nine that we've billed for the year. Except it should be a little bit more than that. And then, uh, we're doing our firearms auction, that's what we forfeitures, what we seizure and arrest. We're gonna go out April third with a driving gun. It should be in the Sentinel this week, it'll be on Facebook, it's a new courthouse posted. But, but the fairgrounds being used, I know we can get that, but just, so we don't interrupt the COVID vaccines, we don't do the driving gun. May draw a bigger crowd anyway, being on the park biking lines, so. So you might start seeing that out here now on some advertisements.
Do you have any questions for the sheriff? Coroner?
Um, I haven't seen you yet in twenty twenty-one, so, um...
Well, I hope you're not here professionally, you know.
Right. In twenty nineteen, we had a record number of thirty-two and thought that would be really high, and then in twenty twenty, I ended at forty-four cases. So, right now, I'm managing to do it on the same budget that we basically did twenty-five cases a year. I don't know how long I can do that. Um, right now, it's because I'm doing it with one less deputy than what we're supposed to have. Um, but we're just kinda waiting for the right, right person for that, um, which, maybe, maybe not, but right now, the ones I've got are doing great. I have Diane Wood on staff and Sean Clover and, um, a couple of other volunteers from Vermillion County and other counties, so just that way, close by, people that we can call if, if anything crazy happens, but. Only at seven for the year so far, so maybe this year it'll finally slow back down to normal.
Well, obviously, I mean, if you need more, you know, we never know, but just taking a guess as to what you need for autopsies, so obviously, if you need more, why discount the most, I mean...
And Dr. Core had managed to keep the autopsy cost pretty solid for a while. This year, we finally had a little bump in that, so. You know, you, you just, you just, it's completely impossible to predict.
Oh, no, no, we're fine, and we understand that, we're fine with that, so if you have to come back and ask for more, why?
Out of those seven this year, we've only had to do two autopsies because they were accidents. Um, we actually had an accident involving an infant, which normally would have to be an autopsy, but sometimes when, um, when it's a very clear cut cause, you can get out of that, and since it was an Amish family, I was especially motivated to try to get out of that for them, and we were able to do that, so. Saved the family some heartache and saved us some money, so.
Okay, well, whatever, whatever your best judgment is, you know, that's your, your department. Tanya, did you wanna say something on Captain Health, or you give us an update on vaccines, or?
Um, I'm Tanya. I haven't met a lot of you, but I'm the new healthcare associate of the department. We've done over three thousand vaccines since January fifteenth. We do three hundred on Fridays, two hundred on Saturdays at the storage fairgrounds. It runs very well. It wouldn't be possible without EMS and volunteers. Julie's been blessing all her team members. Um, we will be moving to the IDTech building. I didn't even know that they weren't there anymore, but the last two weeks of March and the first week, they will, that we've made changes and contacted everybody.
I was asked for this weekend, are they still at fairgrounds this weekend, Friday and Saturday?
Yes.
Okay. I'll post that, I know that. I knew that we were gonna die, you'd have to post them.
Our numbers as far as COVID have died down dramatically. Um, last time I talked to the schools on Monday, between two school operations, we only had one positive case. And we've had zero come back positive, that has been quarantined networks, but anybody that's positive, I think that's very good.
Just so you know, it was posted on Facebook that in six weeks, everybody who's been vaccinated is gonna start dropping dead as a population control act, is what they're trying to do. So you know, your neighbors are dying, follow the work, it's almost done.
Six weeks almost done?
Six weeks is almost done, yeah.
See ya.
Make sure my will's updated.
Yeah, yeah.
Know a good lawyer for this? Do you have anything else you wish to say or report, or?
Not really, I didn't expect to have to.
Okay, well, I didn't know, I didn't know. Well, my impression was you were covering the report on the vaccine, so.
Well, she did.
Okay.
Uh, we do need to consider, and we've, we've, you know, for a while now, had extended hours for that position. Um, the first quarter will end at the end of this month. Uh, the last decision we made in December, I believe, was to move it out another quarter. Um, so...
Cause right now, you're part-time nurses, so you're part-time, is that correct? Or you're the, oh, you're the only one, we don't have...
He's the only one.
That didn't happen, I guess.
No, it didn't happen.
Oh, okay.
Twenty-nine hours a week.
Great.
Twenty-nine hours a week. Right now, I've been working extra on Fridays at the vaccine clinic because I'm the only one from the health department that is there.
Right.
They call me in every once in a while on Saturdays when their shop's staff, or if they have something come up, computers go down. Um, but twenty-nine hours a week is what I usually do to get the old infectious diseases and stuff, that we have about twenty-five cases right now.
So we need to consider to extend those.
I think we need, yeah, I think we need to consider to extend those for another quarter. Um, I also would be amicable, I think it's rational, reasonable to, uh, expect that, uh, for her time spent at the vaccine clinic, that she should, you know, be compensated for that time and be compensated out the vaccine grant. Uh, we are compensating our EMS personnel who are giving the shots, uh, from that, and I think it's only reasonable that she should get paid for the time that she's contributing there.
Right, agree.
So, um, I guess, how, I think how, how to make that happen, so I, let's do this first this way. Uh, I would make a motion at this point that we, uh, extend the nurses' extended hours per week from fifteen to twenty-nine, because that was originally a fifteen-hour-a-week position. Uh, so that we extend that for the next quarter, for the second quarter of twenty twenty-one, and the hourly rate from twenty to thirty, which is what we've been doing. Uh, so that would be my first motion, that we continue that forward.
Yeah, we'll make a motion on that.
So that's what I'd like to do.
I'll second.
Postman made and seconded, all there?
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, the second motion I would make is that the nurse, uh, shall be entitled to receive compensation for standard hourly rate for the time served at the vaccine clinic, to be paid from the vaccine grant fund.
I'll second it.
All there?
Aye.
Okay.
I will mention, uh, the state is working on getting a billing completed. We will be getting reimbursed for, um, injection fees, about thirty-seven dollars for every two vaccines. So we'll be getting that soon. They keep saying that they're gonna push it back and push it back, but hopefully it's...
Supposedly, we're supposed to get some of that eventually.
Yes.
Right. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, oh, you're the CASA director, you wanna ask it, Caitlin, is that right?
Yes, I'm Caitlin Wells.
That's fine, just whatever, yeah, if they were...
So I'm the CASA director of Park and Vermillion County. I took over last year, um, and today I'm just asking for additional appropriation to my budget, which was supposed to be done last year. Last year was my first year ever doing the budget, um, and so I did it wrong. Um, so I'm just asking that the twenty thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars from the CASA, from CASA funds be appropriated into the account, into those separate lines. Um, so I did the same thing in Vermillion County, so next year I definitely learned my lesson and hopefully we'll have this issue.
And for those of us keeping score at home, and those of us that write the budget and adopt it, um, we've always had a twenty thousand dollar budget for CASA ever since that program existed, but it was unknown to me, um, that there's actually, that they actually bring in other grant revenue. Uh, we fund twenty thousand from the general fund to CASA through the circuit court budget, and I think you all know that. Uh, so it always, they submit a twenty thousand, we put that in there. I don't know if it's someplace in the money's coming from, but there's twenty, almost twenty-one thousand dollars was the grant revenue that they're getting, and she wants it appropriated, and I think that's fair.
So every year we, I apply for a matching incapacity grant through the state, so we get that every year, and the matching grant is what, um, and it varies depending on how many chin case, chins cases we have each year. Um, so I know, like, this year, the matching grant was nine thousand seven hundred seventy dollars, so we do ask that, you know, the county can match it at least that much, if not more. So I think what's been happening is that the county's been matching that, the twenty grand every year, which pays for uh, my salary and then my assistant's salary. Uh, and then we, the CASA funds from the grant, um, we use towards the program, um, to, you know, for, for recruitment, for training, for, um, recognition. Um, actually, this year, we were able to sponsor a baseball team and, um, the soccer, a soccer team, so we'll get to, you know, I mean, that helps with our advertising. We'll have the banner up, and then, you know, we get the CASA name out there in the community to help, um, bring in more volunteers, because our volunteers are the ones who, you know, do the most, you know, they do a lot for our program. Um, so that's kind of like a lot of what we use the money for, office supplies, obviously, um, they're just trying to give back to the community for the kids.
It's good for, it's a good back half, I agree. So it's been advertised and everything, so I don't think, well, when we get that, what we, are you willing to do it now? We can just do it now.
I'm going to put the additional appropriations for the CASA fund as advertised, pretty good.
Second.
Postman made and seconded, for the additionals for CASA, all there?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Tanya, and all that. Katie, I almost forgot you.
Well, you don't wanna forgive me. I got lots of deadlines that I wanted to let you know about.
Oh, great.
The ratio study, our lovely ratio study that usually causes everybody to appeal, um, had to be submitted to this, to the DLGF by March first. Park County had theirs in by February twenty-fifth, so we beat that deadline. Um, March second, one day after the deadline, we received, um, approval of our ratio study with only one question on one single sales disclosure. So that tells me my staff and I, who have implemented new protocols on sales disclosures and how we're handling everything and validation, it has paid off, only one question. Um, March first was the last day for anybody that went to Peta Boa to, for the twenty P twenty-one assessment, to file with the IBTR. We have four buttons. Um, most I've ever had in my career, but, um, we all kind of know behind the scenes what's going on with that. Um, I have, uh, went ahead after, I think you guys have given me the approval to go ahead and retain Marilyn Mann as my attorney on these IBTR cases. She has already filed her appearances. We have one at the tax court, at the Supreme Court, and, um, that has not been given a date yet. Marilyn's got everything in place. Um, I don't know that it will happen. I was, I'm very much a newbie to IBTR and the tax court, but, um, my attorney let me know that the petitioner has to pay for all the transcripts and everything from the IBTR to the tax court. Um, that looks to be six to seven hundred dollars at this point. I don't know that that will happen, we'll see, but that may be something that ends up getting dismissed if she doesn't pay those fees.
Right.
So, um, I was not aware of that until she contacted me this last week.
We got one at that point.
So, um, that's where we are on that. I have sent my Form 11 Notice of Assessment file to Midwest Paper, which is who we've used for last year and, and this year. Um, Form 11s will be going out, because you'll probably hear from your constituents, they are going out April twenty-sixth. Statutory deadline is by May first. So they will be going out April twenty-sixth. Um, March eighth, I rolled, um, my twenty-one, paid twenty-two real property values to the auditor, so once she gets those brought in and balanced, then I'll let the state know and we'll move forward. Um, also on March eighth, I did the online through the gateway, our appeal, which is not due until April thirtieth, but it's done. Um, or I'm sorry, March thirty-first, sorry, March thirty-first, but it is done. And May seventeen, or, May seventeenth will be the deadline for the personal property tax filers. It's usually May fifteenth, if you recall, but that falls to a weekend, so May seventeenth will be the last day for anybody to file their personal property tax. last day for anybody to file their personal property taxes, which we've had very few this year, because we did not send the forms, we sent letters, and I know a few of you do have personal property, so you received the letters. We did send letters, signed everybody to file, and/or if they could not get the property tax forms online, they could get with us, we're either mailing them out, or a lot of people will just stop by and pick them up.
That's still a little early.
It is still early, but.
People are filing anyway.
It is, but a lot of times we'll have several that'll go ahead and file since it's January 1st date, they want to get it out of the way. We're down a little bit from previous years as far as volume of what we've received. So if the Sentinel will help me with that, that would be great, that it is due by May 17th, and if they need any forms or need any assistance, please contact my office.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, ready to move on, approval of the minutes prior meeting?
Somebody.
Most of the maiden seconded for the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Encumbrances, you gonna talk about the lawyer?
Well, I only know about the sheriff's department one, that was for prisoner detention, I don't remember the specifics.
Well, juvenile.
Juvenile detention, the bill came out first a year after the deadline for filing encumbrances. So the matron requested that one to be encumbered, and I asked the alderman to put that on the list, I have no answer to the highway one.
Do you know anything about the highway one?
Yes, the highway, they have some repair parts that was left off when they went at the time of the encumbrance. The repair, repair parts that they had the bills for at the end of December was $1,658.10 that they would like to encumber. The, there is a, the highway fund of 1135, the Keweenaw Bridge, they also have a bill for, looks like Colbert's, of $15,425, that needs, that they had the bill left at the end of December, it needs to be, money needs to be brought forward to be paid for.
All right, I want to add one more encumbrance to the list, this is from the local health trust fund on 1206, so it'd be the account number 1206-0002-3030, that's clinic supplies in the amount of $1,413.57 for vaccine supplies and so on for the health department, which was discovered significantly past due. So I'd like to add that one to the list.
And that's lovely code, is it COVID or not?
No, that's the TB, other standard vaccination programs, supplies that they have.
Motion to approve the four encumbrances, is it presented? Sorry. Most of the maiden seconded, approved encumbrances, all in favor?
Aye.
Have no transfers, no reappropriations, no jury by, no reduction in funds, redevelopment did not mean, JP's unable to be here, so we don't know about planning and zoning, courthouse security did not mean. Oh, so anything on new business? Roy is gonna need some help in entering data for the budget, as you all know, Roy's done the budget for the last few years for us, and it's, it's a job for him to just have to sit there and enter data after data, and we, and we're not able to pay him any extra, he just makes his normal salary, but, but we can hire somebody to help him do some of this job, we used to pay Diana Haislett some to do that sort of thing, so I'd like permission from the council, or allowing Roy to hire someone up to $4,000 to help him do some of that, he shouldn't have to do it all himself and sit there.
On the Johnson commissioner's side, on that, we talked about that before, Bob, you would know, is there just no way Roy could be paid as a separate entity?
Roy cannot be paid as a separate entity, he's elected official and he cannot be paid any additional amount of money, I've been through that with the state board of accounts and they are adamant, that we cannot, even if it's a completely separate.
Comes up, that's all, I see, so that's just.
But it's unfortunate, I mean, we paid, we did, we couldn't pay anybody else, the statute allows us in some counties, Bob, probably just hire their whole budget then.
Could they, could they pay me to do that?
No, you're.
No.
Yes, he's not responsible for the budgets, not a member of the county council.
So maybe you need to do that and I can hire Roy to do the work?
Yeah.